Okay, so I've already messed up once. I didn't push my button. We are going to begin with roll call. Oh, I have to push my button again.
I think we all are. I'm going to ask the councillors not to use their microphones for the, just the roll call, and Rob is going to go through a bit of that in a few minutes, so. Councillor Mackey.
Present.
Councillor Gamble.
Present.
Councillor Burley.
Present.
Councillor Carlton.
Present.
Councillor McQueen.
Present.
Councillor Little.
Present.
Councillor Patterson.
Present.
Warden Hicks.
Here.
Councillor Columbus.
Present.
Councillor Kentner.
Present.
Councillor Boddy.
Present.
Councillor O'Leary.
Present.
Councillor DeBreen.
Present.
Councillor Millen.
Present.
Councillor Soever.
Present.
Councillor Bart Nicky.
Present.
Councillor Robinson.
Present.
And Councillor Hutchinson.
Present.
Now I can push my button again, right? Okay, there we go. So, Rob, I believe that you're on deck. I'm going to have an overview of this new audio video system.
All right, good morning, County Council. Welcome back. I hope you had a nice summer break away from the council table, although a short one. So I wanted to be here this morning to give you a quick update before we get going on the council AV system. It is about 99 percent of the way there now, and we are running it today to record the meeting. So I just thought that I'd give you a quick overview of the system that we ended up with, that we were happy to pick, what you need to know as the stars of the show, and using your microphones, because that will be where you notice the biggest change. So our system is, so we have five cameras located around the room. You've probably found three of them, at least. So we have the one behind the warden, the two in the corners, and then we have two discreetly hidden on the back of the TVs. We tried to put them in locations that they wouldn't be too distracting or anything, but they are there to give us good views of the room. So as you know, a big part of this project outside of the videos was the sound in the room. That was somewhere where we really need to make a lot of improvements. So we have six new speakers that are really improving the volume in the back of the room, as well as two at the front there. And you'll notice with your microphones, because we did need to replace all of the microphones, that you have your own individual speakers coming directly to you to make it a little bit easier for you to hear. And if you just look at the base of your unit and give it a little bit of a turn counterclockwise, you'll see that there's also an audio jack in there. If you did want to plug in a headset for improved accessibility for yourself to hear a little better, we can plug those in, too. So it is an accessible system. As well, we have purchased an assisted listening system for our audience in the gallery. So if they're really hard of hearing, we have some devices that we can loan out. I'll just pass them around each side here. So these will just clip onto the hip of individuals that need it, and then they will put the earpiece on, and it will give them a direct tie-in to our sound system so they can put it as loud as they need to to hear what's going on. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll just get them to sign them back in. We'll clean them up and charge the batteries for the next time. So that's going to be a big accessibility improvement. And the brains of the whole system, you've maybe noticed it over there in the corner, that's my cockpit. It's not as daunting as it looks. So what that is basically doing is running the cameras and letting the sound all come in together to create a recording. And it does also give us the ability to livestream, which we would make viewable on the Gray County website for people that wanted to watch live, or they can go there after meetings to watch in the evenings or down the road if they wanted to watch it later. Now, what we have is an intelligent sound system. When we did our request for proposals, that was one of the solutions presented to us. So what that means is that even with all of those manual controls, it's going to be a little simple for us to record as staff because the cameras are actually tied to your microphones. So when you're doing the push-to-talk feature, one of the five cameras in the room is going to be focusing on you so that you're appearing in the shots. So what you need to know as the stars of the show, your microphones are sensitive. That is by design, because we wanted something that would allow you to sit or stand based on your abilities and the preference of the chair of the meeting. So you can see already, compared to the old mics, I can turn sideways and talk, and it's still being picked up through the system, and it can get me from farther back. You don't need to get too close, and you never want to tap the microphone. If you want to know if your microphone's on, you just need to look for the red light at the top to know that it's on, because if you do get too close, it's a little loud, and if you tap the microphones, you get this Christmas light display, which is going to center you out, and it is going to turn down all of the other wired microphones for the time being, and it's like 10 or 15 seconds maybe at the most, but just a warning, you don't want to tap that microphone. And these are two wireless microphones that were also included so that we can do public meetings and workshops and things at the back of the room and still tie into the sound system. The next thing you need to know is that the video is very, very good, especially compared to the old webcam camera that we were using. So just to show you some screenshots here, and I would encourage you for sure to check out the video once we get it posted, so you can see. The proportions are a little bit off in this presentation here, but they are full HD presentations. You'll also see that we're having the little name cards appear. Those are, again, connected to the intelligent camera system with the microphone presets. So it does zoom in fairly close, and as I said, the microphones control the cameras. These are just another example of some of the different angles. Shirley's looking rather dashing in this photo, by the way. And just be aware that while we are trying to focus on the individual microphones and speakers, there could be other stuff picked up in the peripheral beside or behind. So because the microphones are sensitive, just be careful with side conversations if your neighbors' mics are live, and maybe be aware of your facial expressions and things that are going on to the sides, because that could be seen. This is the example of one of the high-angle shots, so we can do side profiles of the room for voting and different things like that. And again, the cameras are quite good. We've positioned them, though, so that they're hopefully not going to be directly pointed at anyone's screens to see what's on there, but it could be slightly available. I don't think that you would be able to read what's on the screen, but if someone recognized kind of the layout of a page, like in a news website or something like that, they may be able to see what you are on and looking at. But yeah, the cameras are good, maybe even a little too good. I, for one, had no idea that this was going on up top here, and that is rather concerning. And the last thing you need to remember, and this is no different than before, is that the footage is public. It will be publicly available and viewable on our website and our hosting platform. So using your microphone, so this, it's very straightforward, but it's going to take some getting used to and making a habit. So first of all, there is some play in your microphone, so if you wanted to move them to the side or wherever's more comfortable for you with your tablets or laptops set up, you can certainly do that. You just need to make sure that the microphone's pointed in your general direction. It doesn't need to be real close, as I demonstrated. And once you find a position that works for you, all you need to remember to do is press your push-to-talk button when you're called on by the chair to speak. That's the one that I've added the little green sticker to there. The other buttons on there really won't matter. The one to the immediate left, that's a mute button, but because we don't have always live microphones, you probably don't really need to mute your ear mic. It won't be on. And then, when you are done speaking and making your point, as you've seen, it is important to turn your microphone back off, not just so that someone else can speak, but again, for those cameras so that they know to pan away from you. So that's your broad overview. If anyone wants a more detailed view of the controls or anything like that after, I'm pretty excited about them and really interested into them. If you want to stick around after for a more detailed demonstration, I'm happy to do that. And if you have any questions, I can answer those for you now, but before I do, I just want to give a little bit of thanks to CTR, which was our contractor that won the proposal. Russell Ellis is here today, just kind of watching over me and making sure I'm doing everything all right, and him and his team have been a very big support getting everything installed and making sure that this is going to be a nice hands-off system for us. And it certainly, it was an ambitious proposal that came through, and we are going to have one of the only systems like this in North America right now.
If I can add to that, Russ's company is Inno and Sound. So, you know, we need to be really proud of having something, you know, so technologically advanced and available to us right here in our own community. Russ, you've been great to work with, and we're really, really grateful for all of your time. That truck's been here for two weeks, I think, so thank you.
Now I can get on. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. I would just like to extend a congratulations to staff and our service provider for this, the accessibility to our Gray County citizens and anyone that's out there watching our meetings. This is really an important step forward, just so that people see the democracy in action, but the accessibility features are incredibly important. So thanks for that opportunity just to mention that. And I'm wondering if there could be a linkage to this particular screen with the displays that we're seeing on top. So is there, right now, it's just blank? Is there an opportunity to tie this particular monitor in with the activities within council?
Thank you, Warden. That's fair. I just want to ensure that we were following the protocol within, you know, the maiden or the inaugural meeting. Thank you.
Ian, did you hear about Prime Milne at the bar last night?
Any other questions? Councillor Soever?
There you go. Thank you for doing this. This is great. Now I can stand up when I talk, and I don't have to bend over. So this is really great, and I think this is a great system, and it'll be a huge improvement, I can see, from the view. Now we'll have to look a little sharper when we come back, you know. Just wondering if you could...
You have to look sharp here.
Yeah. Well, he's looking pretty spiffy. But I'm just sorry, Akash isn't here to get all this instruction. Anyway, the, could you remind us again, what was the total cost of this? We're very interested in this, because we have an older system in the town of Blue Islands. It's similar, but one of the problems we do have is acoustics.
So this project, so this was done on the $70,000 budget that was approved by council earlier this year. Now, keep in mind for your own chambers that this is probably a larger room than what you're dealing with, so you may not need as many camera angles and things. And ours also included the total sound system and microphone replacement and overhaul, which may not be necessary in your municipality as well.
Okay, thank you, Rob. I'm also reminded that when I get Keveney and Carlton wrong, at least the cameras will have it right, right? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Item number five, is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we'll proceed. If one arises, I'll ask you to declare it then. Item number six, adoption of minutes. Six A, we have a county council and committee of the whole minutes dated August the 8th. Looking for a mover. Moved by Councillor Columbus, seconded by Councillor Patterson. Any discussion of those minutes? Councillor Bart Nicky.
I believe there is an error in the minutes in terms of roll call, because I was present at the meeting.
Yes.
And I believe, I know Mayor Soever was there as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that correction. Did you hear that? You were there for, these are council minutes, but you were there for committee of the whole?
In fact, I brought a motion, which is on page six, so yes, I was there.
Thank you for the correction. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. Item six B, CAO Performance Evaluation Committee minutes dated August 8th. Looking for a mover. Councillor Millen, seconded by Councillor Hutchinson. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, are there any opposed? That, too, is carried. Thank you. Item six C, CAO Performance Evaluation Committee closed meeting minutes dated August 8, 2019. I'm looking for a mover. Councillor Carlton, seconded by Councillor O'Leary. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Item six D, the Long Term Care Committee of Management minutes dated August 13th. Looking for a mover. Councillor Robinson, seconded by Councillor Burley. Discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor, any opposed? Thank you, that is carried. And item six E, the Long Term Care Committee of Management closed meeting minutes dated August 13, 2019. Looking for a mover, please. Councillor Mackey moved, seconded by Councillor Bart Nicky. Any discussion on those minutes? All those in favor, any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. We are supposed to, going to close a meeting, but before we move there, I think I will suggest that we move to item eight. Is Dr. Era here?
Yes.
Oh, there he is. Hi, doctor. So I'm suggesting that we deal with item eight before we move to our close-meeting matter. So we have the Board of Health minutes dated July 26th, and the Board of Health report, which is dated August the 23rd. Looking for a mover for those items. Moved by Councillor Patterson, seconded by Councillor Columbus and Dr. Era.
But they're wrong, but here it is. Good morning, council. Good morning, Warden. Thank you for your consideration of my time advancing the item in the agenda. My update today has three components. One of them is administrative. Two of them are related to health. The administrative one was related to the Board of Health on the 23rd, the meeting 23rd ratified an agreement with one of our unions, and the significance of this ratification is the fact that it has zero increase. And that is, again, significant for two reasons. One of them, it's clear evidence of the buy-in of our staff, of the plan that we have to find efficiencies internally and meet the savings, the proposed provincial savings without downloading to municipalities. There is a strong buy-in from all partners or stakeholders around the table, including the union and the staff. And the second point significant about this is the fact that it is the first agreement that the health unit signed in Ontario with zero increase. According to the representative from the Ministry of Labor, this would be setting precedent to meet the savings that the province is requiring. So I really would attribute this to the direct support and vision from the board and from the buy-in from the staff, the strength of the managers and the organization I'm leading. The second two, the other two items related to health, the first one is related to the opiate overdose events that we're seeing in Gray and Bruce. I wonder if we can put it on the screen. It's just one of the last pages in the agenda. My voice could be good on it, but it's much easier to see a graph. So it would be the document right under it. There are two graphs in it. The first one is this one. So you would see in this graph is the number of opiate-related events in Gray and Bruce, how they changed over the years from 2003 to 2018. The blue line, the top line, would represent the number of emergency visits. The second one, the green one under it, it represents hospitalization, and the last one is the events, the death events. And you can appreciate from the graph how it, the number of emergency visits tripled, the hospitalization almost doubled or tripled. However, the death event have stayed the same. And this is kudos to everybody who works in our system. It represents success from first responders to clinics to hospitals to public health that we managed to prevent death. And if you would go down to the next graph in the same document, this is the ratio of people overdosing and recovering versus overdosing going to death, all the way to death. And the numbers or the proportion changed from one death in every four to one death in every 10 overdoses, which is very significant. And again, I would like to thank the county for the first responders, especially the ambulance services for their quick response. So this is the second item, and the third item would be about vaping or e-cigarettes, just a quick update that has been overwhelming evidence from world health organizations and different clinical trials in Europe, where they used e-cigarettes as a method to quit traditional smoking. And all these studies universally showed no evidence to support that. So if they were marketed as a cessation method, they have failed, and that's not a surprise to people who worked in the field. And I'm open to questions.
Thank you, doctor. Councillor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Dr. Era. Just on the 0 percent increase, you did leave one person out, and that was yourself. I think this 0 percent increase has everything to do with your leadership and your relationship with staff and the union, and I thank you for that.
That was my fault. I'm getting used to these controls. Other questions? Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Dr. Era, for the report and for the 0 percent. The number, since 2014, the number of events almost doubled. Is there a new drug that caused that to happen? Is that in direct correlation with fentanyl or carfentanil?
So that brings a really good point. 2014 was around the time where the medical community realized that overprescription is, has happened, and that opiates are not as safe as pharmaceutical companies have presented them to be. So at that time, there was an abrupt change from easy prescription to restricted prescription, and that's when many people who were dependent on prescription drugs went to the street, to the street market. The other event that coincides with this is carfentanil and fentanyl became very accessible through mail from many countries. One of them is China, where they would start, started shipping these drugs by post, and it's really difficult to detect just because a small amount of it could be utilized in any person who want to produce drugs without a proper lab. It's just easy to cook, easy to manufacture. So those two events took place around that time, and that really caused the spike.
See anyone else? Okay, so I'll call for, we did move and seconded, didn't we? Yes, I'll call the vote then to receive the report. All those in favor, are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you, doctor. Okay, we'll now go back to item number seven. I'm looking for a mover that we go into closed session to deal with the proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board to deal with specifically Rockwood Terrace. Moved by Councillor Mackey, seconded by Councillor Burley. I think I saw your hand go up, right?
We're back in open session. We're waiting for a few people still to arrive, but they will arrive soon. Just to say on the record that we went into closed session and we only discussed the items that were on the closed session agenda and nothing else. All right, where are we now? Yes, we have no bylaws. We're turning next to good news and celebrations. Counselor, Counselor Burley, I already know that you're going to tell me that the Prime Minister was in the area and he arrived in the area via Iran.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It was a great honor to meet our Prime Minister of Canada at our Wharton-Cavill International Airport. He flew in in his Challenger jet. It was the only airport in the area that could land safely was at the Wharton-Cavill International Airport, being a certified airport, and it's great for the whole region.
Excellent. Others? Counselor Boddy.
I didn't even have to touch it, I don't think. Magic. For those who like to eat Rib Fest this weekend, I mean, this is, this is the capital of eating. We had the fish fry two weeks ago down at the Salmon Spectacular that was a huge success. Biggest salmon caught in 20 years, biggest trout ever caught, great attendance. I figure we served about 4,000 people on the last Saturday night in about four hours. Then last weekend at the Fall Fair on the Friday night was even better. It was the Gray County Cattlemen's Association Annual Beef Barbecue. It was really good. This week is Rib Fest beside the Bay Shore Community Center. Next weekend will be Tofu Fest, the weekend after that. Of course, everyone knows that we're now farming crickets in the area, so Cricket Fest will be the next weekend and, but if you don't go any farther than this weekend for Rib Fest, you'll be doing just fine. Thanks.
I have to agree. I enjoyed the beef last Friday. That was really good. Counselors however.
We have a lot of good news from the town of Blue Mountains. Last weekend was the Beaver Valley Fall Fair. Our attendance was up. I don't have exact numbers, but we had over 2,300 entries in various categories, which is over 400 more than last year. They also had a car show in conjunction with the fair as well as a backhoe challenge. And I can report that I saw Counselor Bart Nicky operating the backhoe, lifting the tires, and she did very well, and as did some of the other counselors. So next year is our 150th anniversary of our Fall Fair. We're a bit younger than all the other fairs in the Gray County, so we're a relative newcomer. Most of you guys are 17, 18 years older than us, but that will be our 150th anniversary, so we look forward to a really big event next year. Also, of good news, I was able to use the coupon that Mayor McKeen provided to me for returning his flag to him. And we did, McQueen, yes, sorry, McQueen. Yeah, so Mayor, Counselor McQueen provided me with this coupon for the Fine Chapman's Ice Cream, and I was able to purchase a box of 20 minibars, which are in the freezer, so at lunchtime we were happy to share with the rest of the council. And the best news for last is, well, not for everybody, but at least for Gray County, it's good news. Last week, we sent out 370 notices for supplemental supplementary assessments, total of $317 million of assessment we found. 155 million from last year, 124 million from 2018, and 38 million from 2017. Now, there may have been some for 2016, but we can't look back more than three years. So this is really good news for Gray County because it will add 881,000 to county coffers, and which is, we alone have exceeded the budget target of 738,900. So I would urge all the other municipalities to go out and find this missing money because it's out there. And we're not going to be asking for the customary 6% finder's fee because that would be a $52,000 invoice.
Thank you. Others? Counselor Kentner.
This, this weekend, I'm sure you know, is, is the Seventh Annual Concorde d'Elegance at Cobble Beach. It's just a, just a fabulous, fabulous event, and I'm very privileged to be hosting Cars and Coffee on Saturday morning there. So, but Sunday is the, Saturday, I guess there's a huge parade through Owen Sound and, and parts of the, the area. And then Sunday afternoon is the extravaganza where you see the judging of the cars. These are the best cars in the world, and it is just, you'd have to go to Pebble Beach, California, or to Amelia Island in Florida to see anything like this. It's absolutely fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Others? Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. West Gray is very fortunate to have three Fall Fairs that come into play within our, our borders. We've already experienced two of those Fall Fairs, but coming up on September 20th and 21st, I would encourage people to come out to the New Staten, Normandy, Carrick Fall Fair. It is the 149th. We're looking forward to the 150th, so please come on out. And also, I just want to mention that last night we had our inaugural vision session. West Gray Council is extending itself through an outreach to our, our communities. And last night, we had our first vision session in New Staten, went very well, and it was an opportunity for citizens to identify what is important to them within their community and how can we enhance it. And then those decisions will be made overall for the benefit of West Gray. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council. I just want to say that we were quite delighted that we won the PK Marshall Award at the AML Conference with regards to the development of our app. And so again, that was for innovation, and certainly our staff took up the challenge and created that in-house. And then there was a lineup trying to figure out how to get our app. So anyway, that was really exciting. I want to also say that I see that we have with regards to Great Gables, the, I see we had some firemen here in the, in the back. Just, just as we know, the anniversary of 9/11 was yesterday, and they're running quite a series on the History Channel of the events that happened that day. And it's quite interesting to have a chance to watch the History Channel on that event. And with regards to the firemen and all the first responders that responded to that event that day and all the, it's sort of a bit of a, I guess like a documentary. It's really quite telling to say, so I think it was over 2,000 people lost their life in that building that day. And so certainly our memory of that day, which was the anniversary yesterday, but certainly for the first responders, which I see here today, is also very important to be recognized.
Thank you. Others? I want to thank Counselors Bart Nicky and Counselors however for hosting me for a tour through the Blue Mountains. It's very interesting and very well done. And I wondered how, I haven't heard much reports about how many people have tweeted hashtag #visitgray. I see some heads going down. Anyways, I remind you, you can still do that year round. Plenty to do in, in Gray. So we'll keep promoting the activities in, in Gray County. Okay, I don't think we have anything else, do we? That said, I'll be looking, we're looking to adjourn now? Looking for a mover and seconder to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Carlton. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. All right, so we'll switch over now to Committee of the Whole. Just take a second to do that. Okay, so I'll call this meeting to order. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? I see none, so we'll proceed. And we have delegations. Oh, all right. Okay, that's a good idea. The suggestion from the clerk is that we proceed to item number five because there's just one item on the consent agenda, which is that letter from Gray Bruce Health Services. So if I could get a mover, Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Milne. Is there any discussion on that item? None?
Did you have?
Okay.
Just to add to that item, so thank you to Gray Bruce Health Services for providing support to the idea of a nursing program, a full four-year nursing program here in Owen Sound. We've seen some really strong support across the community and into Bruce County as well for this kind of operation. We do have another meeting scheduled with Georgian College, with the province, and with our Economic Development Group to see where we can continue to move this forward. But it's been identified as a, as a priority that we want to continue to try and further develop.
Thank you. Any others? Great, then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. So we'll turn back to item three, our first delegation. Oh, Madam Clerk, you'll... Ah, okay. So why don't we do that? We're dealing with 6A. If I could get a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor O'Leary and seconded by Counselor Boddy. Thank you very much.
Oh, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Warden. The report before you today, counsel, provides an updated code of conduct for your consideration. As you are all aware, the Municipal Act now requires all municipal councils to adopt a code of conduct. Gray County has actually been ahead of the curve for quite a while. We've had a code of conduct in place for councils since 2008, with the last one drafted in 2016. And that was actually prepared by the Gray County clerks for some, for some consistency across the local councils and at County Council. In 2018, Gray County Council supported the appointment of Principals Integrity as our Integrity Commissioner. And at the initial training session in February of 2018, Principals Integrity indicated that part of their mandate would be to develop a new code of conduct for council members. And that updated code is before you today. So with that, I'm actually pleased to welcome Janice Atwood-Patosky, who is one of the Principals of Principals Integrity, to counsel today. Janice will provide you with an overview of the draft code, the new information contained in that code, including the commentary, formal and informal complaint processes, and the reporting requirements for the Integrity Commissioners, as well as any, answer any questions that you may have about the code's content. So I'm, I'm pleased to welcome Janice up.
Well, thank you very much for having me here today. I appreciate the opportunity. And I, you have the code of conduct in front of you, and you also have had the opportunity to have training that we provided quite a number of months ago with respect to the contents of a code of conduct. So I thought today what I would do is speak at a high level to... Little, little help here. Oh, there we go. It went. Sorry. Sorry about that. I'm very low tech. Sorry. So I thought I would speak just generally about the principles that are contained in the code of conduct that is before you today, and walk through just a few of the provisions. So as the clerk advised, the province requires municipalities to have an Integrity Commissioner and a code of conduct, and Gray County has a code of conduct, has had a code of conduct in place for over a decade. The, it's important to have a code of conduct, obviously, because ethical conduct and behavior are core to the public confidence in government. And as political leaders, you are held to a higher standard. So the, am I going the right way? The new code of conduct, which you have before you, is a little more robust than your previous code of conduct for a few reasons. It contains a little more clarity in the definitions. It also provides commentary. So one of the things that we have developed and we've seen developing in municipal codes of conduct across the province is what we think of as a preferred model of code of conduct, which contains examples and commentary that guide members of council. And the genesis of this is pretty simple. Instead of just having a rule, you can now look in your code of conduct and see how that rule gets interpreted, how that rule gets applied. The commentary can be updated from time to time without having to bring an amendment to the rule itself. So if any of you have looked through annotated legislation, for example, if you look through an annotated Municipal Act, you'll see commentary that guides how that gets interpreted. That's the thinking behind commentary in the code of conduct. It's meant to provide not, it's meant to do the contrary of being a trap for the unwary. It's meant to provide better comfort, better guidance for members of council. The code of conduct also complaints, contains a more robust... have you talked to the council member? Have you raised that with the council member? To the formal, which is laid out in the Code of Conduct. And a formal complaint, and I'll talk a little bit later about how we triage and determining whether an investigation's going to be required, but a formal complaint that results in a recommendation report to council always results in a public recommendation report to council. So we talk a little about that. And the Code of Conduct also contains a provision that makes it very clear and really reflects the Municipal Act, that where a member of council reaches out to the Integrity Commissioner to seek advice on a particular issue or question, and the Integrity Commissioner on those facts provides that advice in writing, that advice is binding on the Integrity Commissioner. So the counselor, if they follow that advice, they're basically bulletproof in case of a complaint. So these are, this is basically the index to your Code of Conduct, and these are, we think of as the key concepts. And so that's what you have in the Code of Conduct in front of you. And there are essentially 15 rules. So although it's a, it's a lengthy document with the commentary, it's really a set of 15 rules. And some of those rules are mandatory by the province, and others are just good guidance for elected officials. So what you have is really a code that addresses everything from how to avoid conflicts of interest, to how to deal with gifts and benefits, how to treat each other, how to treat the public, what your conduct is, and interactions with staff. And at the end, there's a provision that sets out that obstructing the Integrity Commissioner or retaliation against somebody for having raised an issue is contrary to the code as well. So, and then finally, there's the provision, as I mentioned earlier, where a member of council can clearly act on the advice of the Integrity Commissioner when they've sought that, and be comfortable that they are bulletproof. So I thought I would talk just about two or three of the provisions, because I thought that this morning is probably not the morning that you would like to go tooth and nail through all 15 rules. So I thought, 18 rules, in fact, but 15 substantive rules. I thought that we would just talk maybe about a couple of the high-level rules, because I didn't want to completely bore you all morning. So, a key rule is avoidance of conflicts of interest. And most of you have already heard this before in training that we've provided. You may not participate as a member of council when you have a disqualifying interest, which includes a Municipal Conflict of Interest Act pecuniary interest. And we call that a disqualifying interest instead of just a conflict of interest, because we think it captures more broadly what's going on. It's an interest, whether it's pecuniary or nonpecuniary is just an aspect of it, but it's an interest that disqualifies or should disqualify the member from participating in the vote or the discussion of the matter. And where members from time to time are aware that some member of the public may be thinking that they have an interest in a matter, but the member, the counselor is pretty certain that they don't have a conflict of interest, they may want to get some advice on that. And then we would generally, in those situations, recommend that they make a transparency disclosure, just for the sake of transparency, just to say, just for the sake of putting the matter to rest, to say, for the following reasons, I've consulted with the Integrity Commissioner, or I've looked at this matter carefully. We would suggest it be in consultation with the Integrity Commissioner, though, and I have not got a conflict of interest, and I will be participating in the matter. Now, they're few and far between, so it's not something that's going to be, be labored, but we call those transparency disclosures, simply because they clear the air so that there isn't somebody out there sitting, listening in with your technology, you're going to have more listeners, saying, I think that counselor has a conflict. So it's just a way of putting the issue to bed. And the rules around conflicts of interest contain other directions as well with respect to contracting or occupations which conflict with a member's ability to serve on council, and those are very distinct areas and don't arise all the time, but when they do, it's good to have somebody to be able to check that with. And that's the role of the Integrity Commissioner. So I didn't talk about this, but it is in the report in front of you, that the role of the Integrity Commissioner is certainly not just, or certainly not even most importantly, to be the hammer that come in, comes in from out of town and kind of clobbers a counselor over the head. We think that is not the best approach at all. The best approach is about council members understanding where those bear traps might lie, and having somebody they can reach out to to get advice, and we think education and training is key. It's fundamental to your ability to do your role properly. So that's why we provide education and training. That's why we, from time to time, appear in front of you. And the advice component is really, really important. And at the end of the day, if there needs to be a review mechanism, then that's the Integrity Commissioner as well, and we use that very sparingly, and I'll talk a little later on how we triage through complaints. And as I say, we think that's not the most important role at all. It's a necessary, but not primary role. So conflicts of interest, and I'll just touch on this really briefly, conflicts of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, those are typically thought of as pecuniary interests, and that's how they're defined. And they could be deemed interest, an indirect interest, or a direct interest. A direct interest, and I'm not going to belabor the detail of this, but the direct interest would be the member's own interest. The deemed interest would be an interest of a parent, child, or spouse in a matter before council. So the member of council sees something on the agenda and says, oh, I think my, my spouse is involved with that organization. I'm going to just check if I have a conflict of interest in dealing with that. That's a deemed interest. You stand in the shoes of that parent, child, or spouse, it becomes your interest. An indirect interest is if you're, as a member of council, a member of another body who comes before council, maybe for funding, and that's a typical example. So if another body is seeking funding from Gray County, and you're a member of that body, you would have an indirect interest. There is an exception. If you were appointed to that body by Gray County Council, then that's an exception, and you can participate. So, little complicated, but still pretty, pretty straightforward. Those are the kinds of things that if you have questions when they come up, when they do arise, ask us. You ask us in confidence. We'll provide you with advice in confidence, and you're good to go. In the past, and you have all heard this in training, but I'll just say it for the benefit of the public, in the past, many members believed that the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act was the only source for conflicts of interest. But in fact, the common law really creates conflicts of interest, or recognizes conflicts of interest that are beyond just the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And one of the most obvious examples that I use is the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act says a member of council has a deemed interest if the interest of their parent, spouse, or child is before council. What about a sibling? And I think most people would agree that if the interest of the sibling, you know, your brother's matter appears before council, or your sister's matter appears before council, most people would say, that feels like a conflict of interest. It's not captured by the MCI. It's captured by the code. And that's why there's quite an extensive provision on conflict of interest in the code, so that people can understand that those things that look like they might be a conflict of interest because of the close relationship, you want to take extra care with. There's another rule that is in the code, and as I say, I'm skipping right through a whole lot of the rules that have been there in your code all along, and I'll just.